This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on January 2, 2024 at 6:02 PM. Participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein Chair, Bill Ramsey, and Joe Fisher remotely. First on the agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I don't believe we have any this evening.
No minutes.
Okay. Next is to consider approval of a special one. Oh, I forgot to read the remote language. Sorry. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? All right. Sorry. That's what happens when you take a week off. Happy New Year, everybody. All right. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for the New Year's Bonfire at Weir River Farm, to be held on Saturday, January 6, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, with a rain date of Sunday, January 7, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we have, is it Elise Kelly?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for joining. And I think we have--
Thank you for having me. Thank you for getting us on the agenda. Yeah, so we're just having, it's the New Year's Bonfire at Weir River Farm. It's this Saturday, January 6, from 5 to 8. The event's entirely outdoors. Vitamin C will be bringing our beer and wine truck like we've done in the past. There will be a food truck present, and it's going to be a nice event to kick off the new year.
Excellent. Thank you. And I know we have Ann Smith-White with us. Did you want to add anything, Ann?
There we go. No, we're hoping to sell about 300 tickets. That's the only other thing.
Okay. Great. And tickets are on sale now, correctly, correct?
That's right, on the trustee's website.
Okay, great. I know you've done this event before without issue, and it's been approved by the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, correct?
That's right. Both Chiefs have approved it.
Okay. I don't have any questions or concerns. Bill, do you have any questions?
No. Ann, you said 300 people expect to do it.
That's what we hope for. We've sold about 180 tickets at this point.
Okay, great. As long as the Chiefs are fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Excellent. Joe?
I've reviewed the application. No questions.
Okay, excellent. I'm ready to take a-- oh, are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for the New Year's Bonfire at Weir River Farm on Saturday, January 6, 2024, with a rain date of Sunday, January 7, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Aye.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent. Best of luck. Best of luck with the event. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, FY '25 departmental budget requests. Do you want to kick us off, Tom, or?
So, yeah, sure. Yeah, we can jump right in, but Emily, I believe, is first.
Excellent. Emily, Mike, hello?
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Thank you. You, too.
Happy New Year.
So I'm Emily Wentworth.
Yes.
So before you begin, I'm going to have to leave the meeting at 6:15, so no disrespect to the speakers at the time, but I will be off. But I'm paying attention until then.
Thank you for joining us.
I'm Emily Wentworth, the Community Planning Director. I will jointly be presenting the budget with my colleague, Michael Silveira, who's the Senior Planner. So on the first slide, you'll see the Department Mission Statement. I won't read it, but instead highlight the principal functions of the department that help us to fulfill that mission. They fall into two broad categories. The first is permitting. That's principally permitting that's conducted or administered by the Planning Board. Some of the permits that they review and issue are housed in the zoning bylaw. Those include site plan review applications. Those are generally tied to land disturbance, occasionally to certain types of special permits that are issued either by the Board, and those include parking, flexible residential developments, and common driveways, or occasionally by the zoning board, and those are use permits. They also administer applications under the subdivision control law and the local regulations related thereto. Those involve subdivisions, as well as approval-not-required plans. Both generally involve the creation of new building lots, and occasionally, in the case of subdivisions, either new roadways or extensions of existing roadways. And then finally, they review scenic road applications. Those involve alteration or removal of stone walls or trees on designated roadways. And I'm going to put a pin in zoning articles because we're going to talk a little bit more about that on later slides. The staff, the functions that they fulfill in support of the Planning Board involve pre-applications. That's occasionally individually for applications that are less complex, like a single-family home, reconstruction project. More complex projects or larger projects involves coordination with our colleagues in other permitting departments to help homeowners, property owners, business owners, and then their experts through the permitting process, how to get a project approved in town. In order to issue these permits, there are certain statutory requirements related to notification, both of hearings and then ultimately of decisions. The staff does a technical review of all applications and then makes recommendations for action to the Board. The staff also drafts legal decisions, and then after the project actually commences, ensures that all conditions of the approvals are complied with and conducts certain inspections. The other principal function of the department involves planning services. So if we could scroll down just a little bit, often, an outgrowth of certain plans that we've conducted results in modification of the regulations that we just went through, along with others. So those tend to involve zoning amendments. Last year, some of the notable ones approved by Town Meeting related to expanded accessory dwelling unit allowances, limitations or clarification on short-term rentals. So there's now occupancy terms housed in the zoning bylaw. And then as an outgrowth of some of our climate action goals, we also advanced an EV charging station requirement for certain larger parking lots. This upcoming year, the Board has already initiated, I think it's 11 zoning articles overall. Broadly, these fall into a couple of different categories. One involves state-mandated requirements. One of those is related to adoption of updated floodplain maps and then regulations related thereto. Another, also, it's required by DEP, are updated water protection regulations. So it's to ensure that our aquifer is imploated, and those are also housed in the zoning bylaw. And then finally, one that you've heard quite a bit about, because we've visited a few times in the past, relates to the MBTA Communities' By Right Multifamily Zoning Requirements, and we'll again touch on that a little bit further along in the presentation. One that's more locally driven, there's been an identified need that I know you've heard about related to cell service. So there's a pending zoning article that would allow both macro and micro, so large and small, cell installations in more zoning districts, and clarify that certain micro installations, particularly small cell installations, are allowed by special permit. So that's pending as well. And then broadly, there's a number of kind of more cleanup or minor-level use and dimensional amendments to portions of the bylaw that are already in place. Some of the planning projects that have been completed in recent years are listed here, and you can see how, for instance, the housing plan was adopted. That led to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw amendment that was adopted this past year. So there's a relationship between some of these projects and then some of the other work that we fulfill. We can pop down to the next slide. Our chart, the two of us are in the department, along with an administrative assistant. Unfortunately, that position's right now vacant, but it's actively being advertised, so that we hope to fulfill it in the near term. And then because the Senior Planner position, Mike, conducts most of the work related to permitting activity, I'm going to have him highlight some of the benchmarks and then the trends that we've seen over the last few years.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. So as you look at this chart, you'll see the different types of applications, thank you, Michelle, that we do review annually and on a daily basis. Clearly, site plan review, which is the most prevalent category here, has the most fluctuation. Just to briefly walk through why that's the case, in 2020, there was a zoning amendment that was passed that basically made it a little bit more stringent for applicants. So you were required to come before the Planning Board at a lower threshold than what was previously in place. So that accounts for the uptick in 2021. And then, as it decreases a little bit, the reason that happened is because in 2021, there was a zoning-- I'm sorry, 2022, there was a zoning amendment that eliminated a previous requirement that tied commercial permits, any commercial building permit, to a dollar figure, which doesn't exactly fit in with zoning, so that was eliminated. So we've seen a little bit of a decrease since that, since 2021. But mainly, we're seeing a lot of residential projects, single-family home, raise and rebuilds, and then some commercial development as well. So sometimes we'll have a permit that goes before the zoning board for a commercial application that is also triggered by the Planning Board. Parking reviews are also included in that. This past year, we did see a couple of public projects. So Cronin Field, there was the basketball court repaving project, as well as the hockey, street hockey rink repaving project. Those are both underway right now, but both came through the Planning Board. And then also, actually, the EV charging station that was recently installed at Town Hall came through the Planning Board. So really, there's a lot of different types of applications that come through. And then there's some post-permit oversight that our department does as well. So it's, we inspect certain aspects of project, especially related to erosion. So we make sure that those are in place before the work begins, as well as protecting trees within certain areas in a project site. Michelle, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down. So this chart right here is just showing the building permits that we review annually. When you look at this, you can essentially assume that the permits reviewed, the building permits reviewed in a given year are about six months delayed, roughly. When the Planning Board approves a project, it often takes several months after that for the building permit to come to our desk, just, you know, for various reasons. That's just the typical timeframe we see. So it's usually like a six-month delay, and then 2021, given that delay, it makes sense because, or the low number of applications makes sense because 2020 was obviously the COVID year. So we, it took a little bit for us to see that delay in building permit applications.
Back to me. Okay. Just to, I'll go through this very quickly. Some of the key initiatives, as we just mentioned, there's a pending zoning article right now to remain in compliance with the MBTA By Right Multifamily Zoning. The significance of that is, well, twofold. A, to a large extent, Hingham has already accomplished or reached, met the intent of the legislation by approving, not by right, but instead by special permit or comprehensive permit, a similar number of units required within a half-mile of transit stations. So we need to modify the zoning so that that use is allowed by right in order to remain eligible for certain state funding programs. In addition to the three noted in the statute, the state has identified 16 other programs where compliance would, you know, would be at their discretion. It would be taken into account when making funding decisions. So stay tuned on that. We'll be back to present more detail. Also, as you know, we held our first annual Master Plan Summit this past month, a month ago, in December. And so that just really represents what we'll see as a more formal, robust implementation process going forward. And then, as an outgrowth of the Selfshore Site Readiness Program, where we partnered with other regional, state, and local municipalities on helping to meet water and wastewater needs regionally, we are also working with those same partners, as well as property owners, on advancing those goals in South Hingham. So those are the key initiatives. The overall budget request is just under $289,000 in this table. You can see how that's broken out. There was a little bit in terms of expenses. We shifted around a little bit of funding, and we also reduced one particular line. So we took $1,500 out of the consulting services request. That's in part because we've been successful recently in getting state grants to fill those types of services. Some of that money is now allocated to postage and advertising services, because we've seen an uptick in those costs in recent years. And then we reduced our office supply budget by $500 because we found that, you know, our office is well-stocked right now and furnished, and we don't see any needs beyond what we've requested next year. Happy to answer questions.
Excellent. Thank you. It's a great presentation. Can you just explain the, it looks like the lines were just switched, maybe, wages full-time and then clerical services full-time? It looks like it's kind of a net zero, probably, but--
The negative 9.7%?
Yeah, exactly.
So the position was, last year, budgeted for the previous longer-term employee in that position, and she would have been at a higher step. We've, for this upcoming year, budgeted for a step one, the beginning of the scale.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Bill, do you have any questions?
A couple of questions. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the great work you're both doing. It's very much appreciated. I know that the MBTA zoning compliance issue was a heavy lift, and I know a lot of work's been going on in that area, so thanks for that. The cellphone article, in addition, the other articles are great to see. I think that we have a lot of articles, good, great articles coming forward this cycle. Can you talk a little more about the cellphone article, just because I know there's a ton of interest in it, obviously?
Sure. So cell towers, their locations right now are limited primarily to industrial or industrial park-type districts. This article would clarify that cell towers are also allowed in the personal wireless services overlay district, which I think was the intent, but the language is missing, and then also newly allow cell towers in the official and open space district. So some of the properties in the personal wireless services overlay also happen to be located in official and open space, but that's so limited. It's just a handful of parcels. This would be any official and open space district. Still subject to review, but it's on in board through a special permit process. The, right now, our bylaw doesn't include a definition of small cell facilities, so that would trigger then a variance proceeding. And while a variance would be viewed through the lens of the FCC regulations and the Telecommunications Act, it just seems more inviting to instead clarify that they are a permitted use and that they're permitted by special permit again, so subject to a review process in any zoning district throughout town. So those are the types of facilities that you've seen grant of location requests for, you know, a smaller, maybe three-by-three box stuck on a telephone pole, that type of installation.
Great. Well, thank you for pushing that forward. It's appreciated. And one of the things I've always been interested in when you do the presentation, Emily, is the number of variances that are granted by the ZBA. And I remember years ago, when I was on the Planning Board, there were quite a few given out, and every year it gets less and less and less, which obviously it's a very high standard to make. Out of curiosity, how many variances were granted last year by the zoning board?
I will defer to Jennifer Orham, whose presentation is next.
Okay.
I think it might be zero. But there is, back to the cell tower or wireless services issue, we expect applications this week from AT&amp;T to permit installations that you and/or DOT have already authorized on, in layouts, on utility poles. They are going to file both variance requests, which are what are required right now, and special permits by at-risk, taking advantage of the pending zoning, so that they have options.
Great. Excellent. And I'm not sure if you know the answer to this question as well, but since the Town Meeting article is approved by the Attorney General's Office with related to detached accessory dwelling units, how many applications have come in?
Again, well, I generally review that, but just one, and it hasn't even opened yet.
Just one?
Yeah.
Well, thanks again for your great work you're doing, both of you.
Yes. Did you want to add anything?
Nope.
Excellent. Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. All right. Next. Nice segue to Jennifer Orham.
Thank you all. All right. So my slides are not as detailed as Emily's and Mike's, but I'm going to just give you a mild view of what we do in our department. The Land Use and Development Department is staffed by myself, Jennifer Orham. I am the zoning administrator and senior planner, and Donna Thompson, who's the land use coordinator. Donna's been with us about six months and has been a great asset to the department. Under that umbrella, we support three different boards and a trust. So we support the zoning Board of Appeals, the Affordable Housing Trust. And this past year, we took a larger role supporting the Board of Managers, which supports the Lincoln School Apartments. Under the zoning board, we process applications, we notice, prepare, and we also draft decisions and then notice those, keep up with our website, and work with people who walk into the office. And many of those people who come in would like to know what they can do on their property. And oftentimes, we then explain that some things would be, would be a variance. So we've been working with a lot of people and coming up with alternatives. We have beginning to see a lot of uptick on interest in ADUs, particularly after the special, the annual Town Meeting. We received several calls after that and are now starting to see people come in and ask specific questions. We, just like the Planning Board does, also reviews building permits online, review them for conformance with the zoning bylaws, and work with different people with signs to lessen the size of the sign, sign off. And once we sign off, we too see a long stagger until they come back for approval. If they, they generally will not be coming in for approval from the zoning board. We generally work with everybody to get them down to a conforming standard. So housing, which takes up a great majority of our time, and I'll go on the metrics a little bit as far, but I wanted to touch on housing. The Board of Managers changed chairs in 2022. We also got more involved with the window project, which has, is close to closing out. We were almost there. With that project, we noted that there were some capital needs with Lincoln School Apartments. So working with staff and engineering and art and council, we deployed some reviews of the building, including the roof, which we received a study for, as well as the building envelope. This month, we'll start the review for HVAC. We have an engineer coming on site this month, and that will give us an idea of what we can do within the side of the building for heat and cooling. That Board has five members. Our zoning board has three members. Going on to the trust, that has seven members, and we support them in many housing ways, which are also listed in our key initiatives. But we prepare for monthly meetings, and we do very detailed financials. Those financials show what we've done with the CPC funds, so that we track that. And that's an important part of our job, is to make sure that we show where all the funding is spent. We then do an update every week of where we are on projects, which Liz is aware of. And that takes a great deal of our time. In 2023, we completed renovation of a single-family condo, as well as a condo duplex. Two of those three have sold in 2023. We also completed renovation of a single-family home, and that's projected to sell this March. We're already seeing a lot of interest in that particular property. Projects in '24 are two-bender condo that we just purchased, as well as a single-family home. And we can, we expect to hopefully go out and continue to purchase properties to help with this SHI. The metrics of that timeline and under the budget is to give you, like, a lot of our time is spent on housing. We are seeing an uptick, as I said, an interest both in applications, as far as, we did receive probably six applications for variances this year. Three went forward, three, they were through before, once they realized that the threshold was so high. So we didn't issue any variances this year. We had about 22 applications. We issued some, mostly special permits, for use. And if you take a look at the budget, I would just say that right now, it's less, about a 1.5%, 1.67% from last year, at $174,000. Most of that is salary. The rest of our line items stayed even. We don't really spend a lot on consulting, et cetera. We mostly spend our funding on fees, which we get back through applications. So that's really, really it.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate all the work that you and Donna are doing. I do get to see it with the Affordable Housing Trust. There's lots of projects going on. And I think the two Habitat for Humanity houses were this year as well, right?
So, right. So they were on SHI in 2022, but they were, they moved into them in August, September of this year.
Yes. Okay. You may have mentioned this, and I might have missed it, but why do you think the number of applications have gone down?
For the zoning board?
Yeah.
I think, I think we touched on it earlier, and that's because of the variance, the more stringent application of the bylaw and of the variance. It's a very difficult threshold to meet, and so the Board is strictly enforcing that bylaw. So I think, I did go back a few years to see what the difference was, and the majority, I would say, it was around Town Meeting when things didn't go through, that we saw a high level of applications for variances that have gone down to, like I said, six, from, say, I think one year was 18 to 20.
Okay. Okay, great. Bill?
I think meeting our 40B threshold has reduced them a lot as well. I remember, you know, years ago, the zoning board would constantly deal with 40B applications.
Exactly.
So once, I think, when we met that, the safe harbor provision, a lot of applications dropped off as well. So that was, you know, a couple of years back, but that probably drives applications down as well. The zoning board used to meet, like Emily brought her members, like, once a week.
Yes.
And it would be like long meetings. So I know that, you know, the work being done there is great, and Rob and Paul, all the members of the ZBA-- the members of the ZBA are wonderful volunteers for us. I just want to thank you for helping to support our affordable housing initiatives. I know your office, you know, drives that a lot, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hello. How are you?
Thank you, first of all, for allowing me to move my presentation from last month to this month.
No worries.
I did appreciate that, because now I'm in the land of the living.
I know. Glad you're feeling better.
Yeah, well, thank you. Okay, so. The Historic Districts Commission and the Historical Commission are two, as you know, very separate entities, and they have differing responsibilities. Primarily, the Districts Commission is concerned with design review to ensure that whatever is new in historic districts or changed meets the guidelines for the Secretary of the Interior standards for changes to historic properties. And the Historical Commission primarily is the body that maintains our inventory and also does, has an educational component, and also deals with our demolition delay bylaw. And fortunately, we've had pretty much success administering the bylaw in the past. We have had, for example, last year, we had, there were 26 cases that I reviewed preliminarily, and some of which had to be taken to the commission. Site visits were made to determine the extent of whatever changes they wanted to do, or the, whether the demolition could, was going to destroy a lot of historic fabric or not. And so 19 of those cases didn't involve the destruction of historic fabric, but we did have others that did. And so I'm happy to say that we had hearings, and seven cases resulted in the homeowner agreeing to the conditions of the Historical Commission in lieu of us imposing a six-month demo delay. And then we had two cases that resulted in a six-month demo delay, but eventually those properties were taken down. So I think we have a, we have a pretty good track record, I think. The Districts Commission actually reviews quite a few cases on an annual basis. We meet every month, sometimes twice a month, depending upon the workload. And so we reviewed 133 cases in last year. Seventy of those were in historic districts and required, also required hearings. And so, which can be somewhat time-consuming. I think we've done a good job of trying to, by meeting with applicants ahead of time, to help them to make sure that they have exactly what they need, and that I can point out some things that may not be approved, most likely. I think we've narrowed down our number of hearings from typically three to two. So that's, that's to do with, I think, we've got a, I've got a wonderful board as well. So, okay. And then, we, you know, essentially, I think, whatever both commissions do is really concerned about protecting the historic assets of the town. And, you know, sometimes it's more difficult than other times, because I think now we're competing against differing values and also money. You know, it's all about money. It's, people are convinced that it's easier to tear something down and build something new than it is to save what they have, and that, you know, in turn reflects on how people value historic resources. So, so that's, I think, one of our biggest challenges. Let's see. All right. Can you move on? I think, on to the organizational chart, which is not complicated.
I don't know if that's a chart exactly.
You're right. It doesn't qualify as an organizational chart. Okay, so, yes, a one-man beer.
Yeah. Very impressive.
Moving along. Key initiatives. We have been, the Historical Commission in collaboration with Mary Ann Donaldson, who is Virginia Tay's sister. Virginia Tay, as many of you know, was, she was very active in historic preservation. And so this is a memorial lecture series, and we've had two very successful, and I know you've attended those, so, we've had very successful speakers. We had John Meacham, that was our first speaker last year, and then we had Doris Kearns Goodwin, who was totally outstanding, and they all are. But anyway, we would, we are planning to continue that as well. So hopefully, I don't know if we can get the big-ticket people anymore, but, you know, we'll just, we'll move along. And we also are continuing to produce videos. One of our commission members is very talented, Elizabeth Dings, who has, we've produced a number of videos, and they're very educational, I think. And they talk about some aspects of town that people might not be aware of, such as Tuttleville. So we're continuing to do that, and we are also, we continue to sponsor the essay contest, which is kind of fun with the kids, for seniors. We are, we continue to spend approximately $100,000 annually from the Green Bush Historic Preservation Trust, and that has done wonders. It's the only, it's the only opportunity for homeowners to take advantage of getting some, some help. And of course, you know, it's, you have to be located within the right-of-way, near the right-of-way, not within it, God forbid, but, but, within a certain, sorry, within a certain distance. You know, that reminds me, I just thought it was so funny when they put up that sign that says, "Don't, if you're approaching a crossing, don't make a right-hand turn onto the tracks if there is a train approaching." Okay? So, anyway, I digress. But the Green Bush Trust has been extremely helpful for a lot of people. And, you know, from shoring up foundations, and these are not necessarily issues that have been caused by the train coming through, because the mitigation stuff was taken care of long before 2007, when the train started to come through again. So these are not mitigation funds that are being distributed. These are to maintain the integrity of the districts along the right-of-way, so. And let's see. Oh, I think Deirdre, and I, Deirdre Anderson, from the Historical Society, and I have been talking about the preservation plan, which is part of the master plan. And so although it says the recommendation is to hire a preservation planner to help construct a preservation plan for the town, we're going to at least begin to take that on, and I think it'll be a pretty inclusive process, but we're moving right along. Also, let's see. So I guess in terms of benchmarks and metrics, you know, we continue to be one of the, one of the towns in the Commonwealth that has a large inventory of historic assets. And it's probably only exceeded by Boston, Cambridge, and Nantucket, because the whole island is in historic district. And I don't think province town quite comes to our level, but we do have more than most towns. And we're very fortunate to have very early properties as well, 17th century, 18th century properties that have been preserved nicely, and hopefully will continue to be preserved. Okay, and let's see. Actually, the, probably the highlights here are, first of all, Tom initiated a program a couple of years ago, so that we would have a sort of a triage system for addressing our monuments and markers. And so his recommendation was to add to my budget, so that we could afford to do that. And so that is going to be underway shortly, and Keith German and I have combined, because his, he has monuments and markers as well. And I would say, we have, we really have a lot in town, and they all need to be taken care of. And so I think this will ensure that they will be, you know, we'll give them a first overview as to what condition they're in, and then take the ones that need to be treated first, and either through budget money, but mostly probably through money from CPA, we'll be able to do that and maintain these. So some of them haven't been done for a long time. Some we keep up with, like the seated Lincoln and Victory, we keep up with that pretty well, but then there are others that need to be addressed. Other than that, the Memorial Bell Tower, we added some additional money there, because after we had all the work done, it was determined that the best thing to do would be to have kind of a maintenance and operations check periodically. And so that's what this money is for, to be able to do that and keep everything running And I think that's probably, that's probably about it. Just as a side note, I have a tendency to try and save postage by delivering my packets when we make site visits on Saturdays, so, instead of putting them in the mail. So it's, but that's all right.
Every stamp counts.
That's right. Yes. I noticed that.
Every dollar counts.
Printing and postage is down, so thank you.
Yes!
Excellent. Well, thank you, Andrea, for all you do.
Oh, thank you very much.
And I appreciate you working with Keith. I know that's, that's an important initiative that we definitely want to see done, so thank you. Bill, do you have any questions?
Just a comment to thank you, Andrea, for all your work. Anytime anybody comes to Hingham for the first time that I'm friends with, they always tell me what a beautiful town we have, and either coming down Main Street or coming through Lincoln, north or south, and, you know, and I attribute that to the great work of your office and the Historic District Commission. I think the commission does a really great job striking a balance between protecting and preserving our history, but also allowing a homeowner to develop their property. And I also know that you take a lot of time to meet with people preliminarily before they go to a commission hearing, and that helps the process significantly. So thank you for the extra effort you put into it.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. All right. Conservation? Shannon?
Got it. Yeah. I was just there.
That's what we started.
Sure. Hi, welcome.
Great. So I'll just queue it up, but I think Art is going to take the lead on this presentation, but I wanted to introduce Shannon Palmer, our new conservation agent. She's been with us for about three minutes, is that right? No, going on, what, almost a month, right?
Yeah, this will be my fourth week.
Yeah, yeah. So Shannon's doing great work. She's had her first meeting, has another one coming up. She's learning the town and learning our process and how Hingham operates. She's doing great work. She's working with Sylvia downstairs, as well as our contract folks that helped us get through the window of time when, before Shannon joined us, and so we have some continuity there as well. But things are going pretty well. Along the way, we thought it would be appropriate for Art to actually give the budget presentation tonight, simply because Shannon had nothing to do with building it, and I didn't want to make her own it, what we had put together. So we put this together, obviously, we didn't have a person in the seat at the time, so Art will present this tonight, but Shannon is here and can answer specific questions about the department as needed.
Excellent. Well, welcome, Shannon. We're glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
Glad you're here. Go ahead, Art.
Well, as I am not a conservation professional, I'll do my best to at least share with you some of the decisions that we made, at least to tee up a budget for the department, you know, absent the leadership that Shannon's only having brought to us, starting last month. So I'll start with some background. Some of this will be familiar. The Conservation Commission Act of 1957 really provides the authority for a conservation commission, and ultimately, the work of the Conservation Department. Essentially, two major tasks. First, protecting the community's natural resources and acquiring lands for conservation and passive recreation. And the second is to oversee the protection of wetlands, water bodies, waterways, floodplains, buffer zones, and riverfront areas in Hingham through the administration and enforcement of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, and through the town's wetlands protection bylaws. That's an important role, critical to protecting the town's environment, as well as a sense of place and character. But beyond that, those important tasks, there are a number of other related roles that reflect on the work of the department that we don't always talk about. And there's a list here, but a few that I'd like to speak to include maintaining over 1,000 acres of conservation land here in town, managing the town's, the commission's hunting program, developing and updating plans related to natural resource protection, and expanding access to passive recreation, as well as coordinating with other departments in town to provide a coordinated permitting experience, and equally coordinating with other permitting partners, either at the state or federal level, on complex projects to protect the town while helping projects move forward. In terms of organization, this slide provides the background, again, introducing Shannon stepping into the role of conservation officer last month. We have an assistant conservation officer position, part-time, that is currently vacant, and we'll be looking for a way to fill that as soon as Shannon gets comfortable and we can work on verifying a position description. And a key player in the department is Sylvia Schuler, our... our department's administrative assistant. She's proven herself to be very capable, very conscientious, thinking ahead to, to prevent problems from coming up and not hesitating to raise questions or issues with, with us to resolve issues early. Now, in fact, you know, from, from June through December, she served as interim assistant conservation officer, you know, reflecting her ability to not just carry the responsibility, but, but coordinate the many different aspects of the department in, while absent a full-time conservation officer. Next. Have a couple of slides on, on reflecting some trends, first in applications and then in terms of revenue. You'll, you'll see at least with the data here, which reflect for 2024, you know, the, the green bar all the way to the right. The, the data here is reflected through November. You can see there's some variation and some of the variation here is, is driven in part by the, the kind of permitting activity. For example, for 2021, in your recent years, the peak in terms of applications, forty-one of those reflected administrative review, smaller projects, many of them exempt from state, from state law or, or regulation. Then looking at calendar year or FY 2022, you can see that at least in the chart here, there's a significant drop in applications. That's driven in, in large part by a, a significant decrease in the number of small projects or administrative applications. There were only twenty-three that year and that explains eighteen of the difference, eighteen of the difference of twenty-eight between 21 and 22. So there's going to be some variation in application activity based on what we have. I do want to point out that for 2024, we now have data reflect through the end of December that show a total of fifty-two applications, you know, twenty percent, twenty-five percent more than what we're, what we had seen through November. And that, that suggests that we're on, on a path to perhaps a hundred applications for this year. If we skip down to revenue, this, this is a bit more challenging and not simple to describe because there are different types of applications that carry different, different levels of fees. And that can, that can bear on revenue trends. I mean, just thinking about 2023, we had more notices of intent, which drive more revenue, which might explain some of the, the gap or delta between 2022 and 2023. But it's also important to note that this is a, a board that, when considering large town projects such as Foster and such as the Wharf Walls, projects that we've seen in recent years, are staff-intensive, but don't generate fees or revenue for the operation of the department. So that's some of the context, some of the, some of the, the background for the budget request this evening. Can we skip down to key initiatives? Clearly any organization has a lot to consider. And first and foremost, we've touched on this a little bit. The, the first priority is to, you know, build the team, being sure that we have the right people in place doing the right things to advance not just the regulatory requirements, but longer term, the protecting the, the environmental quality as well as the quality of life here in, in Hingham. Other important initiatives, creating a prioritized list of property needs, you know, within our thousand acres. It's time to take a close look at what we have, what needs attention and find ways to, to make improvements. Looking at existing plans and draft plans to prepare updates where, where, where needed, as well as looking for ways to improve partnerships with local organizations and volunteers. I think that there's an opportunity there and we're certainly looking forward to Shannon exploring that. If we could, I suggest we just skip down to the expenditure sheet. What you see here, all, all in for personnel services salaries as well as expenses is a delta of about four point six percent. The bulk of that delta is driven in the personnel services, more specifically looking at the assistant conservation officer line. You'll see that there's a significant delta in terms of salary from FY 2024 to FY 2025, at least as requested. That delta is, is driven by a couple of things. First, for planning purposes in this challenging job market where we're budgeting to hire or to have the option to hire at the step three level within, within the grade. But in addition, there's the three percent COLA that's part of that increase. And that, those, those factors together drive the, drive the increase that we're, we're showing here. Now, if you look at the, the expense lines, there's, there's nothing dramatic. You can see overall it's about forty thousand dollars of a $260,000 budget and there's certainly no significant drivers there either. Guess I'd leave it at that and welcome any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Art. Can you just talk a little bit about, under the expenses, the R and M grounds for Straits Pond and how, how we share that expense with Hull and Cohasset?
Would you like me to take that one?
Please.
So I have, we have a, we have a contract with, with Hull and Cohasset. It's managed by Cohasset, no, managed by Hull, actually, where we have to manage Straits Pond. And this is the, the midge issue that is prevalent over in that area. It affects all, all residents in all three communities, so we share the expenses. We have consultants in, in repair work and, and the like that happen on an annual basis. So that's what that funds.
Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you.
So, so the, the four point six three requested increase, is that because the, the assistant position is currently a two, we're going to advertise it as a three?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it was, it's right, it was technically a one. But what we're, we're just trying to give ourselves the room to find somebody with some experience and maybe bring them in at a rate without having to do that through a reserve fund transfer. In theory, we could have, we could have leveled, brought that in at level, at level one and not had that increase and you wouldn't see like a one percent total departmental increase there. But, and we could do that through the reserve fund. So that's still an option. We might see that in my budget when I make my presentation to the town, but in a couple of weeks.
Has the personnel board approved the three?
They would have to if we hire somebody, yeah. But we wouldn't know that. I mean, when, when we advertise and we get someone in, we may have them start at step one. But this gives us the budgeting flexibility to bring in at step three within budget without having to go for a reserve fund transfer. So we'll, we'll see where this comes out after I get my budget done.
Sure. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Well done, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. Alan, do you want to go next? Do you mind if I skip around a little? Okay. Do the people in the room? All right, so we're going to skip to trustees of the Bathing Beach.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it. I have a son to drive into Boston, so I appreciate you taking me out. I was about to raise my hand, but it's not the highest priority. When my son gets near Boston Garden, I think for a reasonable hour. Essentially, as you know, I think if we're not the lowest budget, we're the second lowest budget in the town. So, and I believe our request is actually just a percentage, like seven tenths of a percent below what we were last year. So I don't think, you kind of, it's essentially ninety-five percent personnel, which ninety-nine percent personnel in their, in their uniforms. You know, so it's really what it comes down to. And then some custodial services and minimal electrical utility costs. So I think it's pretty much, you know, consistent with, with what it's been past years. And I think you know what our purpose is, so I didn't really do an initiatives page or anything. So I, you know, I, I think it's pretty straightforward, you know? And I'll take questions, but I think it explains itself, you know, where we are.
Well, thank you. Yes, the Bathing Beach is certainly a treasure of the town and we appreciate all of the work.
I think since the pandemic, it's been more discovered than ever.
Yes, yeah. I think that's right. And just to kind of reiterate, the beach lifeguards, they're within this budget, but managed by the Rec Department.
Managed by the Rec Department, correct. This is, I think, our third year doing that.
Yes. Which has been working out well, I think, yeah.
I mean, the fact that, you know, the whole idea of having a head lifeguard, it's better if there's a full-time person like, you know, Mark or someone that we can talk to, you know, to oversee it.
So is this an increase in wages or increase in the number of personnel?
It's more wages. We, we've had the same, a constant as far as personnel, you know?
Okay, great.
Because in order for us to be competitive and get lifeguards, we have to kind of pay, I think we had a jump a couple of years ago in order to compete with the MDC and others, you know, so.
Sure. Excellent. Bill, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the, the contract for the beach house, how's that coming?
Good. We have some data to collect that I need to speak with Greg about in terms of how he did last year and, and all that. But it's been, the partnership's been great. Greg has been a terrific partner, Greg Acera, who's running it in terms of trash management and has been very helpful. He's been, again, just a terrific partner in that. So, you know, it's going well.
Great.
Excellent.
In large part because of Alan's leadership and helping, helping coordinate time between myself and Greg.
He's been a great partner. He invested a lot of money. We really couldn't have the building we had without him. And hopefully, you know, this coming year, we can get the community room up and going. It largely has been beneficial for the yoga department the last year or so, but hopefully we can get that off in 2024 to throw off some revenue.
Great.
Yeah, we have a very formal, much, well, a process now that will roll out. It's annoying the amount of data, the amount of thought you have to put into these things because of the potential for problems. So it's, you end up with what we were hoping was going to be a one-page application process is like a five-page application process, things like that. But we modeled ourselves in large part after Situ's effort and I think it'll be successful. We just got to, we've agreed to what it will look like and the terms and we just got to roll that out.
To, to, to lease the beach house or use it?
To be able to use it on a day, on a daily basis. Yeah, it's going to, it's, it, there's a lot to it, but, but we're, we're in agreement on what that approach will be and we'll be rolling that out here for the, certainly ahead of the spring. So anybody who wants to start using it all next year, it'll be available in that manner.
Great, yeah, we're looking forward to that.
Including our rec department and other places for community, community uses, which was all part of the special permit.
Right. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you, Ed.
I'm just down twenty-nine dollars.
I know, twenty-nine dollars. That's what we like to see.
Thank you, Ed.
Sue, Sue, do you want to go next?
Keith is online. I don't know if you see him there? Oh, but Susan's here, I see.
Just because you're here.
My name's Susan Sarni. I'm the executive health officer. I'll just quickly go through our mission and services. We have about eighteen to twenty regulations that range from wells, septic, food code. We also work on camp inspections, tobacco. Now we're doing plastic water bottles, started yesterday. So there's several different regulations, both state and local, that we enforce as well as some bylaws. I'll skip down to the organizational chart. I just want to add that we have hired a social worker slash opiate program coordinator and this person will be starting on the sixteenth.
That's great.
Yes, full-time, that's exciting. There's a list of all our inspections and permits. Sixty-five percent of the town is on septic, so that's why we review so many of the building permits. The rest of the town's on sewer. You'll see the other kind of permits that we give out. We have about a hundred and fifty-six-ish food establishments. Also, we permit the farmer's market and all that. Food that goes on at the farmer's market, semi-public pools, include all the condos, septic variances, septic haulers, those kind of permits we issue. I'll speak more in detail about the key initiatives regarding the social worker and the new opiate person starting on the sixteenth. It's broken into two roles, about twenty hours will be given to the Hingham social worker. It's not just the health department, it's for the whole entire town. They work closely with fire, police, animal control, elder services, veterans, housing authority. The social worker will also be available at the library. So I'll work with the Hingham Public Library and we'll get that information out to the residents via our website and social media as to when the social worker will be available to assist residents on any needs they might have in referrals and services. The rest of the full-time position, about fifteen hours, will be for the opiate settlement program. That includes the outreach coordinator, that fifteen hours, community outreach, working with all our commissions, houses of worship, those kind of places that might need additional assistance. That's where people in need go first typically, is their house of worship. So we, Aline, the police social worker, have met with those houses of worship when we get invited to their meeting so we could see what they're doing. It's really exciting and we work together with that. So the new person starting will be taking over that role and all the work that's going to go with the settlement because it's basically delivered by the state on what we can and cannot spend that kind of money on. They're very clear that we can't, we have to add to our existing services. We can't take away and use that kind of money for things that the town Hingham already pays for. We did get a regional grant with Cohasset and Situ it several years ago. It ranges around three hundred to four hundred thousand a year that we're able to do regional work. We've hired a regional public health nurse, a regional social worker, Title V engineering assistants, furthering our education in both my department and the regional towns for certifications and training. BU did a health assessment for the town of Hingham. And then this year, we're going to work with BU to do more hoarding education for any municipal employees, fire police, and then go forward to work with any residents or families that might need assistance with hoarding disorder. I mentioned, we review a lot of the septic plans. I review all the repair septics. The Board of Health repairs any new construction or raw land systems that need variance approval. And then lastly, we have a health, a new health nurse. She started about six months ago. She's doing a lot of new programs at Lincoln Schools and with the Senior Center. She's doing Ask Nurse once a month, so the residents come in and ask questions to her. That's, has a lot of attendance, so the residents are really liking that. And she's going to do a collaboration with the Hingham High students in the Senior Center to see if any of the residents need any assistance with winter shoveling or house safety and things like that, where we could get high school kids to kind of come in and work with our seniors. She's going to work with the food establishments and Hingham Public Schools on hand washing because we know that that's the way to stop the spread of, you know, it sounds funny, but it works. For the food establishment. And then she does public health education at the farmer's market on sun safety. She also does things on tick-borne and hosing safety for the elders. And then that's our budget. Nothing's really changed. I'm going to defer to Michelle because it's a lot on the opiate and how that is placed within the health budget.
Maybe, maybe Susan, the only thing I can think to explain is the nurse, what happened with the nurse. So we, we hired someone at a lower step, but we increased the hours a little bit.
We increased the hours by two and a half hours to include, she reviews Maven, which is our communal disease surveillance system for the state of Massachusetts. When we have certain diseases that we need to monitor to stop the spread within the town of Hingham. And she works over the hours, so that was necessary to add that hours in. We took away from the color, a couple of other expenses in the budget.
Okay, great. And the, the social worker that is spending fifteen hours on the opiate, as an opiate program coordinator, is, is that covered by any of the settlement money?
That is the settlement money. So we took the twenty hours from my social worker, out of my budget, and then we're using the settlement money to pay for that person.
Okay, great. Excellent. Well, thank you for everything you're doing. And you didn't, you didn't mention this specifically, but the mental health coalition that you've started. We're very grateful for all of that work as well.
Yeah, that's working out well. We're meeting monthly now that we have somebody. We have a mental health coalition with elder services, veterans, police, Hingham Public Schools, so we can talk about any needs within the community and try to work on programs and referrals and services for those who might need some.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. How's it going so far with the plastic water bottle?
Good day too.
Day two? So how, so I know that's been communicated. Can you just speak briefly about that, how that was communicated to store owners and businesses?
Yeah. Yeah. So that was by the green committee. And we sent out three letters as the enforcing department for the plastic water bottles. It's for single-use water bottles, non-carbonated, non-flavored, under 128 ounces. So any plastic single-use water bottles are banned.
By, for sale?
For sale. For sale.
Just to be clear, it's not illegal to drink out of them?
For sale.
Yes.
So far, no questions. We got a lot, a lot in the last couple weeks, but everybody seems to be in compliance. I've been in local stores and they have, you know, where their water bottles are, they may have carbon or metal, and they're saying, you know, why?
Great.
Good. So we'll see.
Good. Small step, but in the right direction. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Uh, good. Thanks for how you're doing. So your leadership is fantastic. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Keith, do you want to start with veteran services? Do we have Keith German with us?
Yeah. Before we start, I just wanted to, to thank our assistant Tom Mistrick and Michelle Mansour, if, if this hasn't already been done, for kind of walking everybody through and teaching us how to, how to use this new high-level budget book. It was really an eye-opener. She was able to give a couple of different classes to all the department heads in, and some special one-on-one tutoring. So I want to thank her very much for, for all she's done with that. It's really made this, believe it or not, it makes this a lot easier. So I'm glad to say that that's already working.
Excellent.
As you can see here, our, our mission, what our mission is, hasn't changed much in the last 150 years, I'm glad to say. Next slide. So we're a small department. Right now, the administrative assistant position that we fully funded last year's town meeting is vacant. The person we had just, just was not able to fulfill the mission. So we have shored that up a little with some in-house people. We have people that will be working that already kind of know the ropes in that department that will be lending a hand, along with our volunteers, which I'll mention in a minute. Next slide. So the biggest thing that we do is Mass General Law, Chapter 115. So the 115 benefits are paid in Hingham on average right now to about 15 elderly and disabled clients or veterans monthly. And the total for fiscal 23 was about 125 and change, 125,000 and change. And because of our due processing through the treasurer collector and, and our time, the manner in which we submit our applications back to the state, we receive 75% of that back to the general fund. And it's about a year lag. So that year came back at about 93,916. So it's always great to see that money returned. It's a great program, 7525. It makes the towns throughout the Commonwealth, the 351 cities and towns, vested in providing these benefits and getting their, you know, their electronic filing done. Massachusetts, I love to point this out, is the only state in the nation that provides these benefits to veterans and their dependents. So nowhere else do you, you get this level of service. Total number of federal claims that I've managed, this was from calendar year '22, so '23 is not out yet. That 160, 196 is definitely up over 207, I know of. I also know that that monthly amount would then increase, and the average amount would increase. It's about $1,500 roughly now. So what does that mean? That means 200 of Hingham's citizens are receiving about $1,500 monthly from the federal government in the subsidy in the form of, of payments, and that gets put back into our economy. So that's good to know that that's working, but it takes a lot of work on our end to submit those claims, which can take anywhere from 125 days to three years to process. So there's a lot to it. Next slide. So these are the initiatives, managing the, the Veterans in Need Benefits Fund, which was also mentioned on the very last slide. We expended about 11,000, almost $12,000. Those are from donations. So those of you who got your personal property tax today in the mail, you noticed what we call the stuffer in there. That's that small sheet of paper that says, hey, I want to donate to, and it lists four different organizations on there, veterans being one of them. Currently, we've collected over the last, I want to say the last 10 years or 11 years, upwards of over $100,000 in donations. And last year, we were able to expand about 11,000 to needy veterans. So sometimes the state money just isn't enough. It doesn't get them through, it doesn't bridge the gap. So through generous donations to the fund called Veterans in Need, we're able to help veterans and their dependents live a meaningful and a life with honor. Then we also manage the Valor Tac Work Off Program. So currently, I have six veterans that are authorized or that are working. There's 10 slots available. I've never had those slots full for whatever, for whatever reasons. They spent, you know, 125 hours, can get them up to $1,875 back in exemptions, and as you can see, well over $10,000 we saved in the, in the eyes of like volunteerism. So great workforce I have that are in the office and outside of the office. So they do a lot that we, we see, we don't see behind the scenes. Obviously, I manage the town's military ceremonies, the Hank Mudd Service Above Self Veteran of the Year Award. So that was that picture on the last slide. If you want to go back to that last slide just briefly. In the center of that slide is Janine Suchekki. She was a veteran of the US Navy, and she was our 2023 award recipient. And that's the first time in over 20 years that Hingham has had a female recipient. So hats off to her, and as we can see, the nation changing and growing. Next slide. So this is the, I guess, the meat and potatoes of the, of the slideshow. As you can see, the personal services or the salaries, those are scheduled events. There's another step raise included in that, as long, as well as the full-time employee that I mentioned, which would garnish about a 9.2% increase. The expenses, the next few items, it's about an eight-point, about an 8% decrease. Why that is, is the office is set up. So what we did was we, we, we did hire a person for a short period of time. Like I said, it just didn't work out, but we fully outfitted the office to have two people working full-time. So looking forward, I don't need as many funds as I did last year, this year, saving 8%. Moving down, ordinary allowances. So this is those 15 clients that I talked about. The highest amount of clients we've ever had that I've worked in the last 15 years was 36. Right now, we're at 15. We can see a drastic decrease. Why? Members of the Greatest Generation. Those people have, have left this earth in a, in a staggering amount of about 1,500 per day. And now we're seeing those veterans of the Korean War and the Vietnam War are taking their place. So the ordinary allowances for these folks is going to be up. Why? We have right now two vacancies in the Commander Anderson House. That's the home for veterans on Fort Hill Street. If I was to do my due diligence and max out their benefit level, which is somewhere around the $1,800 a month mark for two people for the year, that shows a drastic increase in our allowance system. Conversely, the medical expenses have gone down for the same amount of people. The state picked up a new initiative last year, working with Health and Human Services. The Department of Veteran Services has now stood up their own executive office. We now have a secretary for the first time ever. And what that did was bring a whole host of things to, to light. We are now mandating that Mass Health pick up a lot of the medical services that the veterans was, were providing. So we saw a mandatory rollout of that, and we're going to see a reduction in those amounts for next year. Miscellaneous line item, that is the mandate that we flag or decorate, as the Commonwealth likes to refer to it as, the grave of every veteran in, in the town of Hingham. Currently, over 3,300 graves. And there is approximately an increase this year of a, for those flags, quite significant. So that increase is up about 23 cents per unit. So hence the large increase there. Not so much dollar-wise, but percentage-wise, you see a massive increase. Overall, or what I like to call in the military, for those of you who are not military-oriented, the bluff. So the bluff is the bottom line and upfront. The total expenses and objects you can see here is only 2.4%, which is well within the agreed-upon 3.5% spending limit. Any questions on that so far?
Excellent. Thank you. We appreciate you being conscious of that 3.5%. And, and for all that you do, Keith, it's amazing what you're able to do in that, in that office and, and how many veterans you can help in town. Just a question about the Veterans in Need Fund. Do you, are you having more requests come in than, than funds available?
So the requests that we get are pretty, pretty much plateaued. They stay, they hover roughly between $10,000 and $12,000 every year. And fortunately, we have some very well-minded and generous people that live within this community that seem to go out of their way to continue to contribute to that fund. So I could say off the top of my head right now, that balance, that balance is, is almost three times as much as I've expended. And it never seems to go empty. So that tells me the influx and the input and the output is almost equal. So it's a great thing. It's great to have, because people who are already living 200% below the federal poverty line that are in need of a medical expense that may be not covered, or a dental expense, just like on the outside, a lot of the dental is only covered up to half. So you already have an impoverished individual that has some dental issues, is now on the hook for an exorbitant amount of money that we're allowed to pay, an agreed-upon amount that we agreed upon was 70% of that total. And it puts the person on the hook for just a very small amount, but it still makes them vested. It makes them vested in a sense that they have to decide whether that procedure, whether that crown, whether that bridge is, is really needed, or is it wanted, and can they afford it. So they have to take a stake, a small stake of it in the game in order to, in order to see that through. And that's just one example. There's hearing aids, eye, all sorts of different things that aren't fully covered. So having that extra fund is just incredible. And then things that are outside the parameters. You know, we've had some tree removal, because there was a tree leaning, a ding shoot close to a widow's house, a 95-year-old World War II widow's house. I mean, the tree was literally hanging over her house, and we had to have tree removal. There's no line item for that in the state. They can't cover that. You know, they, their idea was, well, wait till it goes through the roof, and then we, we can repair the roof. And I, I thought cooler heads would prevail. Let's remove the, let's remove the tree first, and then, and at a lower rate, obviously, right?
Yes. Excellent. Well, again, thank you for all you do, Keith. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, Keith. Thanks for all you do.
Excellent. All right. Do you want to move on to celebrations?
Sure. So celebrations, let me just get to my page. You can see here, the placement, and this is why, this is number one, I'm going to mention this later when we see the figures, the placement and replacement of metal grave markers for those deceased veterans in the six privately-owned cemeteries in Hingham in accordance with Mass General Law. So the law says that they will be marked with a metal holder. So I want to speak more to that later. Planning staffing of ceremonies, wreaths, plantings, et cetera. The celebrations that we tend to, National Peace Officers Memorial Day, that's held at Town Hall annually on the 15th of May. Memorial Day and Veterans Day observances. The Battle of Grape Island commemoration, which is held at Hingham Harbor on the third Sunday of every May. The Fourth of July Parade, which is probably our biggest interest on the South Shore. POW and National, POW and MIA National Recognition Day. As you know, we have three POW, we have three men, two missing in action, and one prisoner of war still unaccounted for here in Hingham. We recognize them down at Whitney Wharf on the third Friday of September. It's a night observance, candlelight observance. It's a very beautiful event, very moving event, and the families of, of some of those fallen actually attend. The Seamen Foss Recognition Day is held on his birthday annually over in the Hingham Shipyard at the beautiful Ferry Intermodal Terminal that we have there. National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Quick story about that. I know Joe Fisher and Tom and I were there today, there today, there on that day, and we laid the wreath. Wasn't a big crowd. Why do I mention that? Because no matter what the size of the crowd, that wreath is still going to get laid. Those men and women who perished on that day, one of the nation's largest catastrophes next to 9/11 will never go forgotten here in Hingham. Whether there's one person there or 100, we're still going to remember that day. What's not on that slide is our, we held our first Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day on the 22nd of September this year at the Hingham High School flagpole. And on August 6th, at the Harbor Bandstand to commemorate or recognize Sergeant Matthew Partika, United States Marine Corps, who died by suicide the previous year. Matthew was a combat veteran of the war in Syria. So the day is picked, the 22nd of September, because of the national average of 22 military members that take their lives on daily. So to commemorate that, we, we had a ceremony. Next slide. That's our beautiful monument out front. And our well-attended Veterans Day ceremony. And again, this is the facts and figures that we're probably most interested. As you can see, the bluff, it's a negative 2.7%. Well below the benchmark. I'll just briefly touch on Fourth of July. Amount is unchanged. That amount is used for first responders. For details, Memorial Day is down due to the metal grave markers. So we are now in excess of metal grave markers. There were times in the last 10 or 15 years where we were, we had, we had, so we now have a surplus. There was times where we had, you know, to beg and borrow to get some. So we had to use some of the funds that we had, some private funding to, in order to gain those. We had to move some inter, I think they call it inter, help me out here, Tom. What's that called? Interbalance, intertransfer, something? So yeah, in order to make that happen. So right now, we're, we're flush with that. So we saw a, a huge, or a huge, about a 5% decrease there. Veterans Day, for the most part, stay, is going to stay steady. The biggest expense we have that day is commodities. And the Battle of Grape Island, again, seems to be completely outfitted at this point. It was a grassroots operation to begin with, all privately funded, and now moving towards year, I think it's now year five, if I stand corrected, if Andrea's still in the room, but I think we've, we finally fine-tuned that in to, to lock that in, and it's 0%. So any questions on those facts?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for managing all of those celebrations. They're certainly important days and remembrances throughout the year. So thank you. Bill?
No questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Bear Cove Park. You can sit at the table.
Well, hi, everybody. Sorry to be so late. Actually thought I was going to have to do this from the car, so.
No, I'm glad it worked out. Glad you're here.
I will keep my remarks brief. If you have questions, I'll gladly answer. But Park is a, you know, a tremendous asset to the town. Our usage of it, the property since COVID has exploded. So, you know, as a committee, we, we, me, what's what, the person who really carries the word needs to be commended is Scott, our ranger. I mean, he, he just is such a great, he takes care of the place, and he's such a great ambassador. He has that. our ranger. I mean, he he just is such a great, he takes care of the place and he's such a great ambassador. He has that boat house open twice a month. He hosts uh classrooms in there and he just, you know, makes the park a whole other level. Um I'm not going to blame for that. We can keep going. Uh the fundraising, we, you know, we'd have that Bean Town race. Uh so we have the uh the rec camp comes in, the rowing team is based there, the Bean Town Marathon, uh and more groups of, you know, fill out applications to host like yoga classes and things like that. Um and of course, where Doc has me, the emphasis is the diamond of the place. Uh so three of our key initiatives, I know we talked about ADA, we, there's a lot of compliance that has to occur over long range. And our two biggies is getting electric back to the park and potable water. So if we get water, we can do it well. So or if we can do electric, we can do it well. Uh we can keep going. So really, we ask for our our expenses are going to praise, stay fairly even. The lion's share of that all all goes to the park ranger. He'll get that cost of living bump, but otherwise it's it's level. Uh we ask for some additional money for porta potties because they're being, we have two there now that are being used uh per our vendor uh extensively. So we know that there's a need for more throughout the park. So that's really why we ask for some more money. Sorry, I can't read it. Our delta, twelve percent?
Nineteen point two.
Nineteen. Twelve nineteen. So but we really, I mean, we do a lot with a little dollars as well, so.
Excellent. Are you um seeing usage of the park? The high level that we were COVID levels, yeah. Is it, has it steadily increased or is it kind of the same?
It's increased, but it definitely, it's still a high level.
Yeah.
I think people are creatures of habit, so they find that place they like and they go there for the most part. Kind of like we lost dog people when the leash ban went in. So they went to Waltham Tuck. We've got some of them back. A lot of them still go to Waltham Tuck.
Okay.
So, yeah. No, we still see, even when Scott does the uh open house, you get sixty plus people.
Wow.
And that's just, you know, it it's amazing.
That's great. That's great. Well, it is. It's certainly a treasure in the town. So thank you for all that you and the committee do. Bill, do you have any questions?
No, I agree with you that Scott is just fantastic. I mean, he's really just a wonderful guy and he's so committed to the park.
Yeah.
Um you know, my Boy Scout troop has gone to him many times for service projects and then he's opened up the the museum. Um kind of to a sponte to let the scouts get in there and see the history of the park, which is very fascinating history. Um John F. Kennedy actually took a course there as a naval lieutenant um in addition to just um the the other, you know, service members that have been through that park and what that park meant to our um military during during World War Two and even beyond that. So yeah, it's great. And and every time I'm in there, I see a lot of people walking around. So I think your request for the port additional porta potties is a pretty reasonable one. Um are the two currently located by the museum right now?
So one's at the bus uh bus depot entrance and the other's by the.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so it would be good to get to ma, if we could add two more, that would be a good request because I agree with you that the the participation level um is is high and it's it's great to see it. So
Yeah.
thanks for all you do to to run the committee.
Any questions?
Excellent.
Quick to the night, huh?
Great job. Thanks for coming in.
Great job. Thank you. Thanks for being here. You too. All right. That's, I didn't miss any, right?
Nope.
Okay. Uh next is the FY twenty-five preliminary financial forecast. Tom?
Sure. So I'll I'll queue it up. Michelle will walk us through the forecast document. Um just a note that to uh and I think you guys know this, the to the, so that the town can understand that as well. Um this is a unique year. This is a different year for our forecasting efforts. We've traditionally and probably for the four hundred year history of the town, three hundred and eighty, whatever years it is, um we forecasted in a certain way. We've already always forecasted based on what our revenue projections were. So our budget equals our revenue and that's by mandated by law every year. We can't exceed our um what we can afford to do. Um however, this year we have an added twist because uh during the uh everyone, I hope will remember during the discussion and the ramp up to the override last year, we approved um a document outlining a three and a half percent growth rate cap concept. And uh that, so now that's an extra regulator on our budgeting process this year, which I think is a healthy one. So we have that, uh we know that three, three and a half percent is our cap. We know that, uh we also, in addition to that, we also know what our revenue pie is. In the event that our revenue should exceed, um we 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 end up with more revenue than than we're able to spend through that three and a half percent cap. The agreement uh speaks to us turning that money into the tax mitigation stabilization account, which will help us uh extend the number of years before the next override is was needed. That was all part of the agreement that was signed last year and was contemplated at the time. So um we're living to that agreement. Uh this is our 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 plan. What, again, what you're hearing from the department heads up until now has been their requests for their budgets. My recommendations will come here in a couple of weeks and that will be in line, of course, with the three and a half percent um increase and the three and a half percent cap uh within the document. So with that said, that is kind of set the table. Uh Michelle maybe can walk us through the forecast page.
Okay. So I'm going to take a page from Keith's book and give you the bottom line upfront on this one. I think usually everyone's kind of looking to just see, you know, where are we at in terms of the the current projected deficit or surplus? And for FY twenty-five, we, right now, we are looking at just over a million dollars in deficit in terms of a budget gap that we hope to close through this process. But then just to start, people at the top, so we're going to focus on this FY twenty-five forecast column that's outlined here. The document has sources, AKA revenue on the top, and uses, AKA expenditures on the bottom. It's primarily a revenue forecasting tool that we use this for. Um but the the biggest revenue for the town is for all communities is property taxes. So you see the levy up here. It's always based on the prior year levy and because in twenty-four we did that um override, that is now built into the twenty-five levy. So we start with the prior year levy of a hundred and three thousand. We add the two and a half percent that you can add each year and then we add an estimate of new growth. This is, we always work with our assessor to figure out what she sees on the horizon and often she's kind of talking to the building department and community planning to see what projects are coming down the line. Our our kind of typical level is six hundred and fifty thousand in terms of the normal renovations and improvements people make on their homes and their businesses. But she's predicting a little bit of an uptick in twenty-five and twenty-six based on one building um inland in ponds that's coming on online over the next year or so. Um so that is the basic levy, but to that we add the excluded debt. And this is the, this is the projects like public safety, the public safety facility, foster school and other school projects that we have borrowed for in the past and we are now paying off. I think one thing to note about this line right here is that is directly um offset by some of the the other sources we have below in an effort to mitigate the tax impact of these projects on people. So I'll talk more about that. Um but you can see that that excluded debt is projected to increase. We're using some of those other tools to kind of ease that increase up instead of hitting a a spike over the next year or so. That will then come down, but I'll I'll talk through that. So total tax levy wise for twenty-five, we're estimating at a hundred and fourteen million. You know, compared to the numbers down here, you can see that is the vast majority of our revenue. The other two main sources that we have are state aid and local receipts. So right now, we're predicting state aid to be about one point five percent above this past year. We really won't know more until the governor puts forward her proposal, which typically comes in late January after the MMA conference. And then even then, that will get refined several times and it won't be approved until after we've had to finalize our process. But this is our starting point for now and we'll learn more through the next forecast. Local receipts, this is all the departmental revenues, it's fines and forfeits, it's building permits, um pilot agreements that we get from different organizations in town. Our motor vehicle tax, our boat excise tax, our meals tax, all of that rolls up into this twelve point four million dollars here. And again, some of this so um you know, we have a first quarter in, we'll get the second quarter in very shortly. But some of this, um again, we learn later in January, um you know, how to tweak those numbers a bit more. But for now, we're still come, we're predicting it to be a bit higher than FY twenty-four and then in the out years, we're just projecting two point five percent at this time. This fund balance slash federal funds line in the past, um this is, we had added the federal funds piece of it because over the last few years in COVID, we had gotten ARPA money, ESRA money and other funds to help. Um all of that has been used. That is no longer available, um with the exception of some of the Plymouth County ARPA money that can be used for specific purposes, but really not for plug plugging any budget gaps. So right now, we're not predicting, we're not counting on it using any fund balance to close this gap. And that will be reevaluated through the process. The next three, Country Club, Whereover Water System and Sewer. These are all self-supporting departments or enterprises. So what you see on the top for sources is the same amount as reflected on the bottom for expenditures. So it doesn't really affect our bottom line. They have to raise enough revenue to support their operations each year. And then a few other ones. So the light plant, um every year we get a pilot of payment in lieu of taxes payment from Hingham Municipal Light Plant. The minimum is four hundred and fifty thousand. It's typically been based off their kilowatt um hour sales. And so we're predicting five hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-five. If you recall, in the past, we had one stabilization fund. We now have four. So we've added four lines just so we can clearly track these. It may be growing as well, but um this first one is the one you've always seen, the hundred and seventy-eight thousand and change. That is an old bond premium from old projects that we borrowed, two school projects in particular. And we have, we've kind of parceled out that bond premium over the life of paying back those projects. So that is one of the lines that is contributing to a smaller debt exclusion number above. So we're offsetting the the interest that we own those projects with that money. Similarly, in the town, special town meeting we held for Foster and Public Safety in the fall of twenty-two, we set up a second step stabilization fund. It's called the Capital Project Cost and Debt Service Stabilization Fund. Um and we set aside seven million dollars of unassigned fund balance into that stabilization fund. And we plan to use that again to offset the tax impact of those two projects, the new elementary school and the public safety facility. We had planned to spend a million dollars of that money in FY twenty-five, three million in twenty-six, two million in twenty-seven and one million in twenty-eight, again, to to kind of help ease that tax increase that we would see with that debt service. And in the next few weeks, as we come to you guys with um warrant articles that we propose to to make sure that we can use this money, we'll kind of do some charts showing what the debt service we estimate would look like with and without using these funds. So you can see how it would be applied. But what this really means is uh up here, you see this seven point eight million dollar number for debt exclusions. The true number that the town's paying is closer to nine million because we still owe the nine million. We're just not raising all of that from taxes. We're using these other sources to offset that, if that makes sense. The next two, the Capital Stabilization Fund and the Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund were created at this past town meeting in the spring of twenty-three. The Capital Stabilization Fund is um automatically collecting the revenues from our new municipal auction process where we're selling our surplus supplies, kind of turning old capital into new capital. Um the last time I checked, our balance was about thirty thousand, but I know we just had some auctions close. Um also, if the town moves forward with the sale of thirty-two Rockford Road, which was also on the warrant last year, the funds from that will be deposited into this. Right now, our thought is we're not plugging anything in in here yet. We might want to let the balance build up to something a bit more substantial, but if we choose to use that, this is the line where you'd see it um flow into here. That would have to be used for capital projects that would again appear on the bottom. And then finally, the last stabilization fund tax mitigation created in the spring, this was part of the override package, where we set aside so far one million dollars from unassigned fund balance because we know that we'll need it to help us live through some of the out years to close the budget deficit in there. And you, we're not recommending that we use that this year. We'll, we're likely recommend that we continue to add to that account this year and then, you know, potentially look at twenty-six, twenty-seven beyond in terms of using it to close a gap. One new thing again in this in this forecast is just trying to separate those opioid settlement funds that Susan Sarni, our executive health officer, was talking about. Because the town is now party to these settlements and we expect to get um money through the state from them for like fifteen years, we thought it deserves its own line. We need to keep track of the ins and outs. Um the ins in terms of these funds that come in from the different companies are being applied through the health budget, like as she explained, partially to offset the the new social worker slash opioid coordinator and partially to help run programs and services for people struggling with these issues. So she's looking at at spending, potentially spending up to a hundred and ninety-two thousand, mostly on those programs in FY twenty-five. Then again, offsets a piece of the health budget on the bottom. At this point, we don't know um if we'll use any excess overlay this year. That is an account that is um controlled by the Board of Assessors and sometimes when when those funds have built up and there's no um kind of pending a big abatement on the horizon, then we're able to release some of those to offset some of the budget pressure, but they're not, it's not something we can rely on every year. So it's more like a a one-time measure to close gaps. Finally, the Municipal Waterways Fund, I believe we set this up in twenty nineteen. This um is an account that automatically gets the mooring permit fees and half of our boat excise tax every year. We build it up, or we're building it up to help offset the cost of dredging the harbor, which is something we'll need to do every ten years. Um but from time to time, we use it to for some of the harbor related capital. So what you'll see in this line, if there's any this year through the capital process, will fund a capital project below. It's not general revenue supporting the budget. So for twenty-five right now, that brings us to total revenue sources at the at the moment of a hundred and sixty million-ish. At the bottom, just at a very high level for now, um you always have state assessments. So the state gives us money and they also charge us money. We pay for the N B T A and other things. So uh that number will have a better sense of after the governor puts her proposal forward. And then this, the overlay, so excess overlay, where to go? Up here ends up getting released as revenue, but we budget overlay every year for the assessing department to be able to use for things like the senior means test, like tax exemption, all the other exemptions we offer. And then abatements, exemptions are always tied to the person, abatements are tied to the property. And then there's always been other expenses deficits, kind of like a a cushion to make sure that we don't overspend. But mostly, I think what everyone is used to looking at is Article Six in the budget. So down here under appropriations, we always pull out capital. We have typically budgeted that. We've added a hundred thousand dollars per year from the tax-supported allocation. So it's not that we're actually decreasing capital when you look at twenty-four to twenty-five. It's just that the twenty-four number includes things like sewer capital, the harbor, the waterways supported capital. And last year, we used four hundred and four thousand dollars of excess ambulance revenue to buy an ambulance. So the real FY twenty-five number will also look differently, but the tax-supported piece of it is three point four million. Article Six right now and Article Four, both of these, for the most part, reflect placeholder numbers for both the municipal and school departments that are just at the three and a half percent um per the financial management policy that Tom mentioned. And then um a lot of our other budgets, like the shared services budgets, health insurance, Medicare, property and liability insurance, those are all budgeted at ten percent for now. Um the health insurance one is one of the last adjustments we make. In early March, we'll get the new health insurance rates from the G I C and we'll be able to make some of those adjustments. But as we go through the next few versions of the forecast, we'll, you know, we'll be able to put more real numbers in those places. But we're, we are intent on living um in agreement with the financial management policy. So that brings the total uses to about one hundred and sixty-one million, which then leads to that one million dollar deficit for now. I think at this time, we anticipate doing another forecast probably in early February, another forecast probably in early March after the health insurance rates. And at that point, it's pretty close to final. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Um can you just talk a little bit more about the capital outlay line? And if I remember correctly, we had, was it five hundred thousand within the override for capital outlay?
Yes.
So is that reflected here or in the override number?
It is reflected here. So I mean, it's reflected in the override number in terms of the revenue on the top, but yes, so the capital budget used to be two point eight million. When you add the five hundred thousand to that, you get to three point three. And so this year, we're putting three point four. And just the four point two you see in twenty-four is, there's like four hundred thousand sewer, there's, yeah, another four hundred thousand for an ambulance that was funded elsewise. And then um I think the one hundred forty-four for waterways. So there's just a few other things in there, but it's not that we decreased it. We did increase it by.
That's what I thought. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Bill, do you have any questions?
I know the stabilization fund money was intended to use for out, for later years to to bridge, to bridge the gap. If we needed it for this year, we could use that money, correct?
That's true. Yeah, that's right. We're hoping not to have to, but we won't, we don't know yet.
I mean, if it did say state aid was down or
That's right.
Something unforeseen happened, we but we could dip into those funds just to balance the budget, correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Very helpful. Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public on the forecast? All right. Next on the agenda appointments. Don't believe we have any.
I don't have any, right?
Uh next is public comment. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. Uh next, Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Art?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Michelle?
Nothing. Thank you.
Tom?
Uh just real quick, just to, I'll draw people's attention uh to our website and our job opportunities page. There are a number of position. Uh, just real quick, just to, I'll draw people's attention, uh, to our website and our Job Opportunities page. There are a number of positions open. Um, please take a look and if you know anyone, send them our way.
Excellent. Bill?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Um, I will just mention that we met with the Forecast Group this morning. Um, so that group went through a, a similar presentation. Um, and that, that group will meet now on a, a regular basis through the budget process. I think that's, that's it. Um, any questions, comments?
Going to need a new phone for budget. Sorry about dropping my phone on you.
Oh, is that enough? Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at seven fifty-three PM. Thank you.